So after a bit of traveling, spending some months in Russia, and getting set up, getting myself established here in Chicago, I'm finally returning to YouTube with this new audio visual setup. And this is the first in what I expect to be a series of videos reflecting on my experiences with the Chicago municipal government, public officials, and the very recent municipal elections that have ran in 2022 and 2023. And I believe it's going to take me roughly about three videos to say all that I have to say about these experiences. And with this video, I want to speak particularly about the Chicago, the now Chicago, city council member, Manna Hoppenworth, who I will refer to out throughout this video just by her first name, Lenny. I do have a personal acquaintance with Lenny, so this is quite natural for me. But first, before I focus in on this particular council member, Lenny Manna-Hoppenworth, I do want to take some time to talk about the Chicago municipal structure generally, set that up, because I want this video to also be watchable for those living outside of Chicago and not familiar with that structure. Because my, yeah, my audience for my YouTube channel has always been, you could say, directed at the world stage or at least the Western political stage, and I'm gonna continue with that. And so you could say that with this video, Lenny will now be getting some world attention, right? So, but anyway, for those who don't know, the Chicago, the city of Chicago is divided up into fifty jurisdictions, which we call wards. And each ward has an office which serves the local citizens, the constituency. And every four years, the ward holds an election to elect on a position which we call the alderman. Now, the alderman then, once in office, hires and manages the office staff, which then functions in kind of a, what you could say, like a customer service role, taking care of the very practical needs of the citizens within the ward. For example, like tree removal services, they could assist with this. Trash collection, if it's not being collected properly, clogged street drains, drainage is not functioning properly, and yeah, issues like this. However, beside these very, very practical and honestly quite mundane issues of government, these aldermen, they also sponsor and organize public engagement events. For example, I've been to a couple, a few commercial corridor planning initiatives where we can decide what we would like to have happen with our commercial corridors here in Chicago, a good way to feel activated in the local politics, meet with neighbors and so forth. Yeah, they hold events such as this. But in addition, they also sit, these aldermen also sit in Chicago City Council, which functions as the legislative branch of government here in Chicago, enacting and discussing and deliberating city ordinances. Most recently, like what to do with the migrants coming into Chicago and topics such as this. So you can imagine there's fifty jurisdictions, fifty wards in Chicago, and then fifty council members sitting in the legislative branch of Chicago government. And I do want to say that for me, this, I'm quite excited, I would even use this word excited, by this role of the alderman. I think it's quite unique, and I don't think, as far as I'm aware, no other city has a function like this. And of course, the advantage by having these aldermen, which say, maybe I should say they serve, you know, twelve thousand constituents, so to give you an idea of how large these jurisdictions are. The advantage here is that you can be with only twelve thousand constituents, you can be in direct contact with your constituency if you're an elected official and if you're in the public, you can have potentially direct contact with your elected official. And the reason why I highly, yes, support this type of role in Chicago and really think it's something we should flex even more than what is already being flexed is because, yeah, in the United States, I mean, let's be honest, when we normally are engaging in government and when we feel ourselves being democratic, you could say, it's often discussing federal level politics, yeah, foreign policy, what's happening on the global stage, things basically that are very out of our reach. And so what I have often argued is that when we are activating ourselves democratically in the States, we're doing so often by gossiping, right? We're talking about things on social media that we have no direct control over. And for me, this is a very ineffective way to exercise democracy. And I would argue it's not a very American way to exercise democracy, thinking in our history is to merely gossiping. Of course, the, I can also be fair, and I guess the hope by going on social media is to go on Twitter, amass some kind of critical mass to actually affect policy. But I would say the average person is not sitting in such an extreme position to try to fight for some kind of activism on Twitter at that level. Most people are quite moderate and not doing this type of, yeah, campaigning on Twitter. So, yeah, anyway, that's, that's why I highly support this aldermanic role and think it should be flexed possibly even more than what is being flexed at the moment. Now, over the past few months, elections have run for this role of alderman up until the beginning of April. And of course, during this time, candidates were quite eager to get engaged with the public, I mean, and for good reason, right? They wanted our vote, they wanted my vote. So this was a good opportunity for a guy like me, recently moved to Chicago, to get involved and find out a bit about Chicago municipal government. Now, I do think that my reflections in these next three videos regarding my experiences, they will all come out of this campaign season. As I've said, it's kind of my only access to Chicago government at the moment. So just a disclaimer on that, these videos, which I plan to be about three in number, will all reflect on my experiences with the aldermanic candidates, the now aldermen, the now members of Chicago City Council. So the way that I was able to have these experiences was, again, it's quite easy. They're eager to meet with the public, so I sat down with coffee with several candidates from my ward and some from surrounding wards. And one of those candidates was Lenny, as I've now prefaced that this video is gonna be about, who won the seat, Chicago City Council member and alderman of the forty-eighth ward of Chicago. And I think that's worth saying, this ward is comprised mainly of the community area and neighborhood known as Edgewater, but also includes parts of Uptown. And then, yeah, just to bring this history up to the present, the present moment, Lenny is now in public office. And as a public figure, I've decided that I can say some words publicly about my experiences with Lenny. So during the campaign season, the Edgewater Environmental Coalition, what we know as the EEC, hosted a candidate debate. And for me, this debate was especially interesting over the other candidate debates. Because while I'm not a guy interested in, you could say, like the justice movements generally, like social justice or environmental justice, yeah, because, you know, these movements are, I find them to be too much grounded in very negative emotions like guilt and blame and retribution. They do have like a flair of punishment about them. I can think of, you know, for example, Greta Thunberg narrative, like, you know, like, "How dare you?" type of talk. This just doesn't resonate with me. But, yeah, but at the same time, I do understand and I do experience what I would call like the spiritual and the cathartic benefits from living in harmony with nature. I mean, for myself, I'm a big champion of bioregionalism and also a returning kind of the, what you could say, like the rural life back in with the urban, bringing kind of nature back into the urban environment, back into the concrete jungle, you could say. You know, just down the street from here, there's what I perceive to be a chicken farm. There's a bunch of chickens in a yard. And I do really enjoy seeing that. And there was a bit of corn crops in a a front yard also just a block from here. And I'd like to see more of that, to be honest. I think that's very interesting to see this rural life coming back into the urban. So, yeah, anyway. And maybe you could say even on like a higher level, the reason why this environmental debate wasn't interesting for me is because my philosophy has been called quite naturalistic by some who have read my work, read my books. And yeah, so because of all that, there should be no surprise that a candidate debate hosted by an environmental coalition is highly, highly interesting for a guy like me. And maybe, yeah, maybe I should also say this. I'm talking a bit about the Edgewater neighborhood in the forty-eighth. Maybe I should say that Edgewater is actually quite beautiful in regards to natural beauty. Tree canopies do kind of cradle many of the streets here, certainly the residential streets. There's also a lakefront, which I'm looking at now, which aside from two miles of it, the shoreline is public access. It really does feel like the city was, it's nestled in a forest and kind of like the city was built in the forest without deforesting. When you look out in the streets, you see a corridor of trees. And it's, yeah, a very beautiful neighborhood regarding natural beauty. So anyway, at this EEC event, the candidates were being asked questions regarding environmental issues in the neighborhood and in the ward. And during this time, one of the candidates really stood out among the others, and that was Lenny. And I'm gonna start my reflections on Lenny at this event, obviously. And when I say that she stood out, I don't mean in a good way. At this event, she openly admitted her deficiencies in understanding the environmental issues in the forty-eighth ward. And other candidates very much surprised me. I was very happy to hear many of them calling attention to the federal government aid which is happening in the ward at the moment in the form of the United States Corps of Army Engineers, who is involved in the lakefront protection. And Lenny showed no knowledge of this, and what she did was quite surprising, and it's where I'm going to take the rest of this monologue in this video. Because what she did, when, you know, in order to, you imagine Lenny is sitting there saying, "I don't know much about this," right? That's not a very powerful move to make if you're running a campaign and trying to get elected into office, right? So instead, what she did was revert our attention to a "representation matters" slogan. This she said, I don't, you imagine, I'm gonna make it sound a bit ridiculous, but this is how it seemed to me. She was like, "I don't know much about the environment, I, this doesn't interest me." But you know what? "Representation matters." And this was the slogan she offered to kind of save her position at this debate. Now, like I've said, it's kind of obvious to anyone that she was offering up this slogan on account that she didn't, she wasn't offering anything novel to the discussion on the environmental issues, even after a two-hour event with, of course, rotating talks between the candidates. But she had plenty of time to say and show her care for the environment. Show her care, not just saying she cares, but show her care that she was invested, done research, and had a plan on what to do with, for example, the lakefront erosion and how to maintain natural habitat and such like this. She offered nothing. So what I found, and kind of what I've already known from having a coffee with Lenny, was that this was not merely a one-time fallback statement for Lenny either, this "representation matters." Rather, and looking at her website today, this "representation matters" slogan is featured prominently on her website, at least at the time of recording this video. I don't know what she'll do in the future, but I do understand that this slogan is what won her the seat in Chicago City Council and as an alderman. And because of that, I do think that it's, in order to continue reflecting on Lenny, I do think it's important to spend time considering this slogan and especially where this slogan derives its political power. And this is ultimately what is important, I think, when reflecting on Lenny and what type of council member she will be. So the question is, you know, why does Lenny say, why does she repeat this slogan "representation matters" at a debate about the environment, right? And answering that question could be pretty easy. I mean, there's quite a few obvious answers to jump out, right? For one, representation is obviously the cornerstone of American democracy. We're told we live in a representative democracy, so of course, representation matters. I think all of the candidates on that stage understood that. But, you know, if we're honest, this is not what Lenny means, right? I mean, if this was the case, it wouldn't mean anything, because again, all of the candidates, I'm sure, agree to this. So what does Lenny mean when she says "representation matters"? She means to say something about identity, right? She means to say "identity matters," and this is also apparent in her campaign where to a large part, her narrative was built on identifying as a queer woman of color. And perhaps as a side note, I should say that Lenny is married and her and her husband have two children. But we have to then refine the question. Why does identity matter to Lenny? And why does she believe that this is the right type of narrative to run government on? And why does she feel that this is even more important than, say, the environment when we're at this environmental coalition debate? Why does she bring this up? And why has this taken precedent in Lenny's life over, for example, environmental issues, safety issues, and et cetera? So to consider this, I wanna, I wanna, yeah, hypothesize on a certain train of thought and see where it leads us. Let's assume that if you identify as a man, then this means you can speak for men, that you know their experiences intimately better than you know, than, say, a woman would know them. And if this is the case, we can also assume the opposite, right? Like, if you're a woman, you can speak for women, women, you understand their plight, and you can speak for that better than a man can. And the same goes for other demographic categories that we could choose, poor, middle class, various ethnicities, whatever demographics, however we wanna slice the American people. So, yeah, people who've spent time in jail, people who haven't, for example. That could be another way to slice the pie. And so this logic then follows, if you're poor and of European descent, you can represent the poor white better than you can represent the rich white. That makes some sense, I think, to all of us, of course. Now, if this train of thought is the correct one and if we hold this to be true, then running a "representation matters" platform should be highly risky for someone who does not identify as, for example, a straight, heterosexual, European descendant, cisgendered person, since that's the majority demographic in most parts of the US, and it's also true of the Edgewater neighborhood and the forty-eighth ward. So running an "identity matters" platform on the assumption that you'll speak on behalf of your identity, a queer woman of color in this case, it should be very dangerous for any minority, right? Now, of course, what I'm saying here is quite politically charged, right? This is not a light topic, and I don't take it very lightly either. I hope you understand that watching this video. But what I need to say is that, you know, I don't buy into this "identity matters" narrative. I'm talking about a heavy topic, and what I'm trying to do is understand Lenny's "representation matters." It's not something I would hold or run a campaign on, but Lenny has done this, and I'm trying to understand what she means and how she won her seats based on this narrative. Because on the surface, this "identity matters" campaign, it does appear quite racist or sexist. And if not any of these things, then it at least appears quite, you say, identityist. And here, you could fill in the blank with whatever identity you choose. And yeah, of course, that is a quite loaded statement. I do realize this. It makes it sound like I'm saying that Lenny is a racist or a sexist. So what I need to do in order to clarify my understanding, following my encounters with Lenny and following all of my experiences with this municipal election, is temporarily set aside these reflections on Lenny. I need to take a few minutes and reflect on the movement, the political movement that I understand, which has sought a temporary strategy to, you could say, reverse liberalism's colorblindness, as it's called. I think that this is not anything novel, what I'm saying here. There's been a move to set aside colorblindness, right? And let's talk about that movement. I do understand that that is the movement which has given Lenny her strength in her campaign. So after reflecting on the more general, I will then come back and speak about Lenny. Yeah, so now I'm gonna have to talk about some quite heavy and quite serious stuff. It hasn't been heavy and serious already. Following the death of George Floyd, the tensions between the liberal agenda and the progressive agenda became a bit more explicit. And from where I was sitting, many progressives were claiming that liberalism's colorblindness had not delivered on its promises. And for example, Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream had not realized. And so for these progressives, this meant adopting a strategy which did seem in direct conflict with King's dream. And I would cite as my example in this, what was a news article and an event which was quite in my focus during that time, was the Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston, which explicitly took up a "we notice color and we notice gender" strategy when admitting patients into the hospital. I felt this was quite a dramatic and shocking move based on what I had heard my whole life, that we should be going for this kind of colorblind strategy. And here we were, then admitting patients, a very dire issue based on color. Now, of course, no matter where you personally fall in this divide that I've now laid out, this liberal-progressive strategical divide, I think that any one of us, any American, should be able to at least sympathize with the progressive strategy. I mean, racial disparities are quite well documented, of course. And the statistics showing these disparities, they do offend our spirit for liberalism, for equality. And therefore, it is not surprising to me that many had sought an explanation to these statistical disparities. They wanted something actionable, right? This makes sense, I think, to any reasonable human animal. So the popular explanation is, of course, well-known. This is not gonna be anything dramatic. It's that, for example, African Americans or the poor are disadvantaged, right? Meaning they've not been provided with the equality of opportunity which liberalism, which American democracy had promised them. And this, of course, can account for the inequality of outcomes. Because they've not been provided equality of opportunity, of course, the outcome of this, of their life, of their education, of their health, of course, we're going to see inequalities in the statistics. And then, again, coming back to George Floyd, this interpretation following this event had resulted in a peak of activism, which is usually referred to by proponents and definitely by detractors as social justice or critical social justice, or the pejorative being woke, although I think some even own this label of being woke. And once we get to this point, right, once we get to being aware of differences and trying to animate the differences in color, we're no longer doing colorblind strategy, right? We're then clearly at a division between what you could say, this kind of classical liberal position, maybe we can call it like that, and the progressive left or the far left or, yeah, whatever. I don't need to say woke again, but you get the idea, right? And the object of critique for this later strategic movement then goes under the popular name, we're all quite well aware, systematic racism. Meaning, being defined as, the data shows racial inequality even where no instances of individual punishable racism can be found or reported. And with this opponent, then in hand, this systematic racism, the activists and champions for policies of race and gender preference. And this is what I understand as the foundation, what gave strength to Lenny's campaign of "representation matters" or, as I've now argued, "identity matters." This, certainly her slogan of "a queer woman of color," which was on all of her mailers and documentation. All of this owes itself to this larger national, perhaps even global movement. I think it's definitely, I would argue, it's a very US movement, not a world movement, but it could be argued otherwise. Anyway, you know, it's not too hard to see that, you know, what I wanna say is, it's not too hard to see that public policy, which is built upon these statistics featuring racial or gender disparities, it does encourage an us-versus-them thinking. I think that it's a, it is a highly contentious type of narrative to run. It not only encourages a potential dissension in the public by animating the differences and divisions between people and their similarities and likenesses, it also forfeits the possibility that, for example, an African-American, Asian-American, Hispanic individuals, that they could also suffer from the same ailments as their, call them European-American counterparts. It kind of tosses aside any ways in which we could analyze statistics and data which may show that we share a similar similar suffering, similar ailments, and that common solutions could be found. And this, I do have a bit of an issue with. I have a bit of a large issue with this way of animating demographical statistics. And it's probably why I'm sitting here making this video about Lenny. And, you know, that's a lot about race, but you know, regarding gender, I'm also thinking of things like the Red Pill movie. I guess you guys are also familiar with that, which depicted the suffering and the communion of suffering which was happening in a men's group reported on by a prior feminist who then quite felt very sympathetic to these suffering men. But anyway, whether these, what I need to do now is say, whether these appeals to identity or race or gender policy preference policies, whether these are effective largely depends on the motivation behind the diagnoses, right? So if the diagnosis of systematic racism is made with a healthy intention, if we believe the author, if we feel, if we feel it's coming from a genuine place and they're genuinely suffering when looking at this data, and they really are trying to be a human being, right? Then we're likely to accept. Uh then we're likely to accept uh and sign into law public policy uh based on uh based on this uh statistical evidence. We're likely to favor uh we're likely to favor gender, race, preference policy, even though it feels quite unliberal. You know, as an example, affirmative action may be an example of a of policy which did have a good run. I do read now that it's being contested in in universities and so forth. But for example, we felt uh as as a general population in the states that this was what was needed and this was coming from a good place and that it could res- have good results. So uh it it can happen. We can set aside our preference for equality and and uh rather champion what is popularly known as equity in order to achieve that equality. So I think that I've laid out the history uh and also given a bit of my own in the process reaction to that movement. Uh and all of that um was kind of a side note that I needed to to say some words about in order to come back now to talk about the Representation Matters campaign, or as I've now argued, the the Identity Matters campaign, which uh Lenny ran, which should be obvious now. I do see it as a bit of a divisive type of campaign to run. Now, regarding the question of motivation for an Identity Matters campaign uh for Lenny, of course, I acknowledge this can be a bit of a sticky question to approach, but you know, I don't think I'm uh especially uh unique, but you know, eh when you meet someone, when anyone meets someone, uh you also try to understand them, right? Uh this is a a a kind of a natural thing to do. You don't need a a university degree in psychology to understand someone such that the next time you meet them, you're better equipped than the previous time to manage that relationship in in a healthy way. So you know, with that caveat on this kind of sticky issue about motivations, I I do have a I do have a personal encounter uh with Lenny, which has given me some insight into the motivation for for Lenny's campaign. And that's what this last section uh is gonna reflect on. So when Lenny first uh launched her campaign, uh I sat down to coffee with her and it was there that I was confronted by an explicit sexism. She had, at that meeting, she had called the forty eighth ward a woman's ward. And I do understand what she means. I'm not trying to play dumb here. Uh I I I've Edgewater particularly has a history of very successful women leaders. So, okay, with that said, I I understand what she means. But at the same time, you know, you have to pay attention to the words of people and how they make you feel. And in that moment, I felt myself uh repealing from Lanyum. Being uh pushed away from Lenny by by her words uh and and you know, to say something like, the ward that I live in is a woman's ward uh suggests something altogether different than the fat than than the idea that okay, yeah, there's been uh a lot of successful women leaders living in this area. I think those are two very different things to say. Now, at that meeting with Lenny, I didn't feel, uh I had just met her, uh you know, I I didn't feel it was quite the moment to disclose that that inner state that I was feeling, that kind of feeling of being pushed or pulled away from her. So after I I did, I didn't wanna just leave it at that, though. Afterward, I did text her that I I didn't feel her campaign was for me, uh suggesting that I I couldn't support her. I I couldn't uh hang posters, you know, I I couldn't do call cold calls or or door knocking or I wouldn't, I would not feel comfortable doing any of that uh after after having met her. Um and as I've said, this should be quite obvious. I mean, this sounds quite harsh, but 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 you know, she didn't speak to me, right? She in in fact kind of excluded me, uh seeing that according to her, uh I live in a woman's ward. Uh now, this was not my only uh experience that that I that I can reflect on here. Uh and I do feel uh encouraged to share publicly uh another anecdote about an elected public official. I think that once you're in a public seat, uh you are now open to um being talked about publicly. I think that that is a, I think that's a fair thing to do. So I don't feel like I'm stepping outside the bounds of of what is within my right as a resident living in the forty eighth ward when I uh share this next testimony. Um specifically, Lenny uh showed me uh pride where I didn't feel that pride was justified or correct. Uh and uh it may feel quite nuanced, but again, psy- psychology and and motivations are are it's a it's a it's a tricky or sticky situation and a nuanced one. But I I think that uh when you're meeting people and understanding their motivations, you have to get nuanced. I I I think that you are picking up to the nuances when when you are engaged with people. So anyway, with all of that said, uh she showed me that she was proud uh that uh her husband took her last name, Manna, that uh they they decided to hyphenate the name Manna Hoppinworth. And again, this may seem quite petty, but I'm trying to understand, trying to understand Lenny, who is now my representative in city council, right? This is something that is fair to do. Who is representing me? Uh and what I took away from that was that her pride uh was based around some kind of pain. And this uh pain was resolving itself through some type of micro victories in her life, such as the name hyphenation. Um and of course, on a might be if that's kind of a a micro victory, as I've now said, a a macro victory to contrast would obviously be uh Lenny winning the seat uh in Chicago City Council and as the alderman of the forty eighth ward. And it is my personal assessment of Lenny uh that her campaign was quite personal. Uh it seemed to me uh that she needed to prove something to herself and she needed to prove, for example, the forty eighth ward is a woman's ward. Um you know, and of course, saying that, I I don't wanna be taken as a bad guy here. I'm just trying to lay out uh how my encounter with Lenny struck me. And this is someone who's who's apparently supposed to be representing me. And so I think it's fair I say this. Uh it could also be that Lenny is carrying around a lot of pain and this might actually, you know, I can also speak for Lenny. It may actually make her a passionate alderman. Uh this does happen in a lot of cases, right? Some people with the most awful past rise up to be great leaders exactly for the reason that they have sublimated their suffering and turned it into something positive, right? And uh on this uh on this point, I I don't know enough to speak about Lenny. I don't know her well enough. Uh and and so I, as a resident of the forty eighth ward, and I think the rest of us living here, I think we're yet to see how she performs in this role and uses her suffering that I've now diagnosed uh to her advantage, which I I do hope, I do hope uh can become an advantage for the the people living in this ward. And also, as I've kind of hinted at the beginning of this video, also the greater ecological condition of the ward. I I I genuinely hope that uh that this is a a positive experience, having Lenny uh representing us um in in city council. Uh and it's yet to be decided what she does with her apparent sexism, as I've now argued uh for. So with this, uh I think I'm gonna wrap up this video here. Uh for those who are not familiar with my videos, I've tried different formats, ten minutes, uh more podcast style, two hours. Uh but since this is a bit of a new uh direction and assumably a new audience targeting the citizens of Chicago, I'm I'm gonna cut this video here, uh kind of at this dramatic conclusion. But uh I will, as I've now uh suggested, continue uh my reflections coming out of uh this municipal election in subsequent videos. I expect to do about two more. Uh I think I have that much content. And uh I will uh continue to reflect on Lenny, but I I will also move away from Lenny and speak about some of the other candidates in the forty eighth ward and and also maybe the forty sixth ward will become relevant, just south from where I'm living. Uh but particularly what I want to do is focus on what can be done with this uh division that I've now laid out between what we could say is a very uh division within the Democratic Party, between the liberal Democrat and the progressive Democrat and this either colorblindness or um acknowledging of color strategy. Uh and I I I I want to move, I I started with Lenny because it was a good place to start, talking about this uh division. Uh but ultimately, uh I don't wanna be unfair to Lenny. What what I, what the real ambition here is to consider what is the healthy move for moving forward in Chicago uh regarding this uh kind of dissension between these two strategies. Uh because it should be obvious by now, after all I've now said over the twenty or thirty minutes, I do think that we can do better here in Chicago than a Representation Matters campaign. Or as I've now diagnosed it, a uh Identity Matters campaign. I I think that we can do better than that uh certainly here uh in the forty eighth ward.